Okay, it is seven oh one, we'll call to order. The town of New Canaan Town Council meeting, regular meeting for Wednesday, December eleventh, two thousand and twenty four. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Eric, would you like to lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Let's stop if we could have the roll call.
Rita Bettino.
Tom Butterworth.
Here.
Jennifer Fons.
Luke Kaufman.
Here.
Mike Morrow.
Here.
Maria Norton.
Here.
Kimberly Norton.
Here.
Hillary Orman.
Here.
Christina Ross. Here. Eric Tunam.
Here.
Ben Young.
Here.
Jennifer Zonas.
Excellent, we'll now call the meeting to order. I guess the Cubs got Pax not here, so we'll now move to agenda item number two, the minutes, approval of the minutes for the regular meeting held on November thirteenth, two thousand and twenty four. I guess we'll have a motion and we can open it up for discussion. Yeah, so could someone make a motion on this for approval? I'll make the motion. So I'll make a motion for the approval of the minutes for the regular meeting held on November thirteenth, two thousand and twenty four. Can I get a second?
Second.
Christina seconds, open up for discussion.
So a couple of changes. My usual irritating self. Powerhouse lobby, under the powerhouse theater section. The number it stated is a million, is a one thousand six hundred and fifty, that should be one million six hundred and fifty thousand. That's the sum of those numbers. And then in the summary, I was tended to say two million nine plus TBD, in other words, projects not yet identified. The sum of those equals total campus. And then two lines below that, a million three forty five plus TBD equals gap.
Okay, anybody have any comments or questions about those proposed edits? They seem fine to me, but anybody else? Having heard nothing, any other comments, any other edits, proposed edits to the minutes, anybody? Tom, anything else?
No.
That's it, anybody? No, okay, having heard no further edits. Then we'll make, I guess, an amended motion, right, to approve the minutes as amended by the edits by Councilman Butterworth. So I'll make that motion, have that amended motion now. So can I get a second? Christina, all in favor? Passes unanimously. So the minutes are now approved, the amended minutes. We'll now move forward with agenda item number three, public comments, members of the... Oh, sorry, I didn't even see her out there.
Yeah, first.
Rita's not here.
She's not on.
I am on, I'm sorry, my camera's not working.
No problem, so please Rita, go ahead.
No, I'm sorry, I was raising my hand to, as a, like, I was agreeing.
Oh, okay, sorry. Proved unanimously. Okay, agenda item number three, public comments. Members of the public are welcome to speak to the town council on agenda topics scheduled for review and or vote. Speakers are requested to provide their name and street address and comments will be limited to two to three minutes, subject to the total number of speakers. Do we have any public comments here or out in online land? No, no public comments. Moving forward to agenda item number four, adoption of the audited financial statements, approval of a request to consider the recommendation of the audit committee to accept the audited financial statements. Floor is yours. Sorry, fifteen minutes by Robin Friar and Kelly Lentz.
So, good evening, council members. This is the report of the Audit Committee for two thousand and twenty four. We were trying to get the slides up on the screen for the benefit of anyone on Zoom to see them, but the technology is not working. But you have them all on your tablets, right? Because I'm going to sort of walk through those slides. You either have them in hard copy.
Can you hear Mike a little bit more so that...
Is that better?
Yes.
Okay. So I'm going on the basis you all have them. So the first slide sets out the members of the Audit Committee. And just a bit of background, because there's been a substantial change in the past year from the founding of the Audit Committee in two thousand and twenty four until twenty, sorry, two thousand and fourteen to two thousand and twenty three. There were only seven people that served on the committee and all but, all of those but me are gone. For those who may not know, the Audit Committee under the charter has three year, has terms, three year terms, and you can be reelected twice, a maximum of nine years, so hence the turnover. So although it's not on the slide, I just would like to pay credit, give credit to the people who've gone before me and I hope that we can mention that Bill Parrot, who chaired the committee for nine years, did sterling service to the town as the chairman, and Chuck Jacobs on the secretary for nine years, George Moranis at Cangus, who all did three terms on this and did fine, fine work to get us to, you know, where we are today, which is in a pretty good shape. So the, the, the committee now, I'm, so I'm in my, the second year of my second term. Well, sorry, just completed it, I guess. I've done five years out of a possible nine. Mary, where are you there? Mary, you all know, she served on the town Board of Finance for years, knows the town finances very well, kindly agreed to join the Audit Committee and is here as the Secretary of the Committee. Thank you, Mary. And the other three are all, well, no, Bill Bradley's new, Tony Cece's new this year, Janet Lanaway served a term on the committee back in the beginning, the first three years of the Audit Committee, she then stepped aside. Her late husband and my dear friend John Lanaway then took over, and then I succeeded him. And I managed to twist Jenna's arm to come back and do a second term, so she's back. Tony Cece and Bill are new, but they're great. So we've got a great team here. Point I want to make is that little bit on the bottom of the slide, which is the term of Bill Bradley expires, has expired on the first of December. And that is because he only joined like six months ago, but he was completing an unfulfilled term which has now expired. So I sincerely hope the Board of Selectmen, is anyone here, will recommend his reappointment. And I sincerely hope if they recommend it, that you will approve him, because he's great, and we want him back, please. Okay, so much for the membership. So going to the second slide, so we had, we normally have five meetings during the year typically on the calendar, and we had two meetings that were not on the calendar, and this was to do with appointment of, and reappointment of auditors that we'll come to in a minute. The main focus of this meeting and of our December meeting is the annual comprehensive financial report, which I assume is in the packs, right? Yep, right, runs to some hundred and forty six pages as it typically does. I will at this point give credit to the people in the Finance Department and, and her staff and as well as Sean O'Keefe and his people who, you know, in the Department of Finance at the Board of Ed for all their work and, and our auditors. Is the auditor online, do you know?
She's not.
She's not, okay. No, I'll thank her anyway for, for her, her service. We'll come to that in a minute. But the auditors, the Board of Finance, sorry, Board of, you know, to some extent, but the finance staff and in her team, fantastic job this year. Two years ago, we had to, we were still in the position of having to ask the state for an extension. This has to be filed by the thirty first of December. If you don't get an extension, and it's embarrassing to have to ask for that, because it's six months after you're in. We had no problem completing it this year in time. So well done to all. And I, I will say this as a chairman of the committee, and I think Mary will back me up. The, the draft that we got was in very good shape. Very little had, had to be changed or adjusted or anything by way of improvements. So the focus of the committee, we always have a good look at the M D N A. Some of you have probably read it, maybe you've all read it, because it's important. Other than the, the technical people at the rating agencies and the bond placement firms, really, most people only read the M D N A. So that has to be good, so you always spend a lot of time and focus on that. The Government Accounting Standard Board issues standards, there was only one new one, accounting standards, and they update them from time to time. And there was only one new one this year, which is to do with, you know, compensated app, when you get paid when you're not here, basically. They've made some adjustments to the rules there, but not of any real consequence to us. Capital projects, we, we as the Audit Committee ensured that the auditors spent a good deal of time on looking at capital expenditure, because we had, you know, some major items, you know, there's a movie house. And we're talking about the year to June twenty four and the early stages of the police station, among other projects, no problems. And then related party transactions this year, if you've looked deep into the document, I don't know what page it's on, you know. What?
Sixty eight.
If you got to page sixty eight, you'll find disclosure of related party transactions, which we've included this, 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 this year. It's there to read. I don't want to say anymore on any of these areas, but we'll take any questions, Chairman, if, if you want. The loan for the Riverwood purchase, what is it, four million? Four million, yeah, was a post-June event, but it's significant, so that is noted in, in accountant language as a post-balance sheet event. It's in the footnotes right near the end, right? So at the end of the day, the auditors have given us a clean opinion. They believe the financial statements are materially correct, that's not the technical word, that they fairly present our financial affairs. They found no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies. And those are technical audit terms in our internal financial controls. That means our internal, our internal controls are in good, in good condition. And they're ready to sign the clean opinion. So, I mean, this is the crux of what I have to say, and then the rest is dealing with reappointment of auditors. But the Audit Committee, and this is our main job, recommends that the town council approves the ACFR for issuance, for filing with the state and putting, putting it out for the public. So I, I, I don't know what the process is of voting on this, it's not my job, but we recommend you approve it, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so does anyone have any questions? I think that's, first of all, thank you for your...
Yeah, so far, then the other things are to do with reappointment of auditors. So I think if we could pause there.
It's a great idea, yeah. And I, first of all, thank you for the very diligent and hard work, both of your committee and with the outside auditors. I know they're a top flight operation. So I'd like to open it up to any questions, discussions. Eric, why don't you kick us off? Thank you.
I actually have a number of questions, and, and these refer to the actual statements, the hundred and some odd page thing, so forgive me, and I hope you have a copy in front of you.
I'm just going to get mine.
I do.
Question is on page fourteen, the definition or description of fiduciary funds describes that in part they are for the benefit of parties outside the government. Could you just explain who those parties are that are outside of the government?
Our trust funds. So it's pension fund. Pension fund, the OPEB fund, and we have another one called Marsley, it's a scholarship fund. And there's a smaller Board of Ed one, but they become the fiduciary ones that are outside.
Just because it's my first time reading through this.
No, sure, they're, they're sort of ring fenced, if you, as it were, of it for obvious reasons, you know.
Retirement funds and scholarship funds. On page sixteen, there's a line item, or actually, maybe it's down below, talks about student activity revenues. Yes, charges for services revenue increased by a million three seventy one, seven eighty four, primarily due to an increase in student activity revenues. What are student activity revenues and why does a town receive?
I don't see the detail on its Board of Ed activity funds, so it's all the different activities that the schools, each individual school has. They generate revenue from it. Some can be rallies, but I, I don't have the specifics of what that, what they all are.
Okay.
But it's their activities.
Thank you.
It used to be that there was a sports council. And the sports council collected camp money, they collected money, a donation from the kids that participated in the score, and then they paid different things out of that. That's all gone away and it's come back to the Board of Ed. And Board of Ed now controls and manages all of those funds.
I like a million four increase, that's pretty good.
I, I think it's the transfer, the complete transfer over of the summer camp programs.
Okay.
You know, the sports camps.
On page seventeen, it says general government expenses decreased. There was a decrease in ARPA grant expenses of eight hundred and sixty nine thousand eighty four dollars. What are ARPA grant expenses?
So we got just under six million dollars from the ARPA grants for COVID. And that had to be assigned by December of twenty four, of what projects? So the Board of Selectmen, and I don't remember if it went to the Board of Finance, but they were, the funds were committed for different things. So there was the YMCA, there was all these different smaller five oh one three Cs that went through the foundation and they divvied out. So all those items assigned. That's six million dollars, should I say, was assigned.
Right.
Committed. So the, as you can imagine, the expenditures in the first couple of years of that grant, which I think it came in in twenty one or so, not sure.
Most of it, yeah.
Most of it. It came in two tranches and the majority of the expenditures happened upfront. So now, now we're spending down the remainder of it, which is less, if that's what I'm...
So an ARPA grant expense is actually the allocation of ARPA funds received and where we as a town expend though. Okay, okay, I thought there were other expenses associated with having received the ARPA grant. I didn't, didn't understand, okay.
You didn't have to spend them in the same year we had them, so it's been...
It's just a terminology of what an ARPA grant expense is, I understand that. On page eighteen, page sixteen actually showed an increase in total revenues of nine million three hundred, five hundred and thirty four thousand, five hundred and forty dollars. However, on page eighteen, total revenue and other financial sources were one hundred and sixty three million, five nineteen, one fifty six versus...
I'm sorry, where was that?
Okay, on page sixteen, there's a line item, total revenues. Increase in total revenue, sorry.
There are two completely different schedules.
Okay.
The one you're looking at on page eighteen is a modified accrual schedule. What that means is it takes what was budgeted for the general government funds, and it adds in the state pension and OPEB for teachers, because that's up at the state level. So you can see the difference there where you, if you look at the Board of Education expenditures, this is the budgetary side of it. When you go to the, I'm sorry, I called it the wrong way. This eighteen is the budgetary. Sixteen is the modified accrual. So if you look at the Board of Ed, both there, let me see, there's a revenue grant and there's a Board of Education expenses, says the Board of Ed expended a hundred and thirty one thousand, a hundred and thirty one million. There's actually sixteen million of revenue and expenditures to record what the state has as the expenditures and revenues for the teachers' pension and OPEB. So that's what's called the modified accrual. It takes the budgetary and adds that in.
Okay.
Schedules are different, slightly.
I figured this would all be answered in this...
Every accountant who's come from the private sector and joined this Audit Committee like, has the same, has the same...
You got to learn a whole new language.
Particularly the one you've just talked about, yeah.
Okay.
With these different accounting bases, which, this is, this is what the Government Accounting Standard Boards sets, sets in dark rooms in Norwalk, not very far from here, it makes these rules to confuse us all.
Okay, on page twenty three, we show total long-term debt of a hundred and twelve million, six hundred and seventy thousand. If you go ahead to page twenty five and you add the current amount of long-term debt, plus the long-term debt under long-term, you get a total of a hundred and nineteen, seven eighty three, nine sixty eight. So that's a difference of about seven million. I'm just curious why those numbers differ.
You're comparing...
Sorry.
No, no. I just could say again, you're comparing page twenty three with what? With page twenty five. Three has a, a small schedule, governmental activities, and shows total long-term debt, two thousand and twenty four, of a hundred and twelve million, six hundred and seventy thousand twenty. You go to page twenty five, and if you add the non-current liabilities, which is long-term debt.
The fifteen million you're talking about, the fifteen oh?
Yeah, yeah, you add the fifteen oh fifty three to the one oh four, you get a total of one nineteen, and that differs by seven million from page twenty three.
So again, this is going from the difference of a budget to modified to full accrual.
Okay.
So this is showing you the portion belonging to the year versus this is showing what's completely outstanding. We don't, we don't carry that liability of the full debt. From a budgetary perspective, we show just the, the expenditure for the year, whatever the debt service, fifteen million, whatever it is, plus interest. We show that on a budgetary basis, but to bring it up to full accrual, they have to bring it back and they show you the long-term debt of actually what's outstanding, but we don't have it on the books.
Okay, I suspect that my next question will be answered in the same way, but property taxes is shown three different numbers. Hundred fifty one million, nine sixty four, eight thirty six on page sixteen. On page twenty six, it's shown as a hundred and fifty two million, eight hundred and thirty thousand, eight forty nine. And then on page twenty nine, and at several other places in notes, it's a hundred and fifty two million, four hundred and fifty two thousand, two hundred and thirty eight.
Let me see if I can find, so Exhibit C, and this is where it gets carried. So again, three different methods of carrying it versus what they take back. So, this is going to... Exhibit C basically takes what your fund balance was from the end of the year, fund balance activity from the year before. And then it brings all the adjustments to bring it to full accrual. So when you're looking at Exhibit C, page two of two, all these adjustments are done in here, capital assets depreciation, deferrals of outflow. All these different parts come into bringing it to the other level, which can change the, the A R on the, on the, the taxes slightly from the calculation. I don't know, I'd have to give you, like, I'd have to go into the actual formula and tell you what it is. I couldn't tell you on the fly on that, but I'd be able to tell you that if I have my spreadsheet.
Okay.
But it is, it's a matter of going from that budgetary modified to full accrual.
Okay, and then I had a note here that said, please explain pages sixty five and sixty six. So let me get to them first, so I know what I'm asking you to explain. Okay.
This is fund balance? Fund balance.
Yeah, fund balance. Unbalanced and restricted net position classifications, just basically what, what are these two pages showing me?
Okay, so this is at the end of the day, your rainy day fund, basically, your, your fund balance of what you have. So the general fund, as we know, is, is the general fund that you vote on the budget, and that's what you choose. So we have what's restricted. As Robin had talked about before, we have different Gatsby rules. One of them is called the leases, so that becomes a restricted amount. That's a eighteen thousand in there. Other governmental funds, scholarships, that's restricted, so it can't be then you have in the other governmental funds, which rolls forward from an RSI schedule all the way at the back of the report. We, we take, so we have different funds, so say we have a special projects fund. In that special projects fund or capital funds, we have to break it down by what category does it come under? General government, public safety, DPW, all those categories?
Yep.
So they break the fund balance of that into these categories, okay? So library loan, you can see the three, that's what's left on the three million loan, that's sitting in what's called our small bonded capital projects. That's what's called a major fund, so that's where that has to reside. So that's that loan. The construction contracts, that's part of what we've, we've paid out plus our expenditures on it, trying to get through all of them. So there's different ones, restricted, committed, have different reasons as to why. So the committed, we've committed three million to the library, so that is our, that's an A R, but that's in our fund balance, so we have to show it as committed. Restricted are, we can't use them because they are for specific reasons designated under these categories. So then it totals across to the total government funds. When you go to the next page, this will show the bulk of what the general fund is. So you'll see the general fund. We have, you also have another category called assigned, so you can assign your fund balance. So in the general fund, we've assigned like two hundred and sixty five thousand for compensated balances, meaning someone leaves, we owe them payouts from sick time, vacation time. This is a reserve in case we get hit with a really a big year, we have a lot of people retiring and we just don't have the budget for it. We've been very fortunate to be able to hold it if it, if it's happened in the regular year. Heart and hypertension, there for possible claims, so we make sure we, we have that in place. Storm damage. We've been very lucky that we've been able to, because most of it is salary related, we've been able to cover it, so we haven't used that drawdown. And then the subsequent year budget, that's when we budget the deficit. As you know, we say the use, what we call the use of the fund balance. So we designate that. So what that's saying is, for the general fund, we have just over six million dollars assigned for different reasons and are unassigned, which everyone says is kind of your savings account, that is the twenty million too, to say at the end of the day, our fund balance is twenty six, three forty in the general fund. If you, the question probably will come up going, the small bonded one is in a negative balance. That's because we, we bond in arrears. So say the police station, we're paying out right now. And we don't have the bonds for that. I'll go out for some of them in March, because we wait till the project is pretty much done before we bond. So you're going to have more proceeds coming in as much to cover the expenditures. We didn't bond in twenty three, so that built that negative up to about ten million. We bonded in twenty four, so between the, we bonded twenty seven, we've spent out just a little bit over that. It actually brought that deficit down, but when I go to bond again, it'll bring it down again. So that's why that's a negative.
Okay.
Does that answer it?
Thank you.
I didn't get too much in the weeds on it.
No, that's fine, and, and I appreciate it, and I, I appreciate the patience of the, my colleagues in letting me go through all these questions, which you probably, many of already know, the answers to. On page sixty seven, looks like went from four million six in twenty three up to nineteen million in twenty four. But when you look down at the total, there's almost no difference. So how do I read that second line? How do I read that up top versus down below where there's almost no change?
In twenty three, we had two different funds, what we call the ISF funds, the Internal Service Fund, we had two funds. We had the Board of Ed and we had the town. We don't need to keep it separate. We need to keep their fund balance separate, but not the actual fund. We're trying to reduce the number of funds that we have, and it's been a recommendation to, to reduce them. I think we've taken down about seven to date. So what we did in twenty four, and it, it got voted through the Board of Finance, that we would close out the Board of Ed ISF fund, combine it into the town, they're kept separate. They have their claims going through their book, there, we keep them completely separate. So you would have seen in twenty three, two different breakouts of claims, the town and the Board of Ed's claims. Now they're combining them, they're in one fund. There's another schedule here that would show it easier, so you'll see where there's transfer of one point six million out of the Board of Ed and one point six million into what we now call the ISF fund, combined ISF. So the bottom line is basically the combined fund overall.
It's one fund.
It's one fund now, but it used to be two.
Two.
I'm really happy you guys do this.
I'm sweating here.
Boy, keep in mind, she loves to answer questions, okay? She, in college, she loved taking tests, all right?
Eric, what I did when I, I, I mean, I was like, when I started, and I'm an auditor, right? I've never done minutes. I, I, I went through the previous years, like you've just done, and went to, and sat for like two hours with, then see if it was one before you, and that's explaining all this to me.
Yeah.
And then I said, is there a book where I can read about how this all works? And he said, yeah, there is, so. Four years later, I'm about fifty percent of the way there. four years later, I'm about fifty percent of the way there.
Read to us.
It's a big book.
Last question about the actual numbers is on page one hundred and twenty-eight, and it shows a total debt outstanding per capita of five thousand, eight hundred, four dollars. I was just curious how that compares to our similar towns and municipalities in the state.
I'd have to get back to you on that one. I'd have to pull their, their different audits and I can, do you want it just for, say, the most current year and just get a?
At the end of twenty-four, New Canaan was at fifty-eight oh four, you know, where was Wilton, where was Norwalk, where was Stanford?
I can go online and get the reports. It'll be the same schedule if they do an affer. It should, it's the same required schedule, so I can get that.
Eric, yeah, obviously until everyone files twenty-four, we don't know, but historically, we've tended to be one of the higher ones over the last decade.
Okay, but we still maintain a triple A rating, which is good.
We are, I, I understand, maybe Andrew does as well. We are, although we're higher than Greenwich, Darien and some several other municipalities around here, we are nowhere near endangering our triple A rating. I don't know.
Great.
Yeah, as long as we beat Darien, it's fine.
I can't hear you from back there.
What?
We can't hear you from way back there.
Come on down.
Down whichever, whatever it is.
Hi, everyone. I was just saying, when we met with Moody's, when we did our last bond issue, their guidance to us was, you know, how they factor in unassigned fund balance is different now, and they're expecting to see healthier balances. And I think we were more towards the lower end of that acceptable range, and based on that feedback, we are ensuring that we're not gonna dip below those levels.
Moody's does their, each, each of the rating agencies look at a different criteria. Moody's, they, they zero in on your fund balance. And actually, we talked about this at the Board of Finance. Moody's treats Connecticut differently because Connecticut's so dependent on property taxes. So under their matrix, you, you probably wouldn't have a triple A entity in the state of Connecticut because of their matrix, but they do an adjustment for Connecticut because of our heavily popular dependence on, on poverty tax. So, you know, they were quoting, quoting some other places of having a forty percent fund balance on the books, but our policy is ten percent. We keep the ten percent plus. But like I said, they do this adjustment at the end when they go through their whole rating of us and then do an adjustment to bring us back up to the, because everything else in the matrix, we hit all the matrix, the management, the per capita and that. But they're slightly different in that, and they focus on a fund balance. S and P, they do it from a different perspective as well.
It's also important to note that in the last bond issuance, that even our bond, not our council.
Oh, financial advisor.
Financial advisor. There was some discussion of moving from Moody's to S and P because Moody's doesn't, Moody's and S and P look at us differently and they don't give us, Moody's doesn't give us credit like S and P would give us credit. So, you know, I, I think, I think what you were saying is correct, but we're not, it's, it's the way Moody's does it. It's not necessarily, you know, if S and P were to look at us, I think we'd be treated more favorably in a, in a rating.
They, don't they look S and P more at, well, one of the, at tax collections? Now tax collection's a lot, ninety-nine point six percent.
Right.
Which is important to study.
Yeah, no, thank you.
Forty percent, isn't that a waste of money?
The, the calculation they do, and it, see, it, to me, it's not apples to apples, because if you bond in arrears, because you don't want that money sitting around up front because you're not always spending it right away, we do an arrears and we bond what we need. Not, we have a project at thirty million, it comes in at twenty-five, and now I'm paying on an extra five million that I can put somewhere else. We do it in arrears, and in doing that in arrears, it makes, it can fluctuate our fund balance, which could make it look lower. And we're really not. It's just in that one particular year or the year that we haven't done a big bonding, it fluctuates. They're not taken really into that account where you have other places that could have just put on a bond issuance, haven't spent it now, and it looks like they got thirty million dollars sitting there.
That's a great, great explanation.
So that, it's not apples to apples, and that's why it's, Deanna.
Perfect. That's, that's actually a very clear, distinct, black and white explanation. Did someone record that?
He's trying to get in the paper. My, my final question relates to something in Exhibit K on page sixty-eight in the notes. Note C, related party transactions refers to a two hundred and eighty-one thousand, ninety-three dollar payment for vehicles. And we as town council members have been copied on at least two or three, maybe four or more emails from a citizen in town who claims that there's some impropriety on the part of a member of town government related to this activity. I would just like to hear Rob from you as the chairman of the audit committee, that you have investigated that thoroughly and found there is no impropriety and any disclosures with, with, with respect to any of those transactions have been made, fully vetted, and no further address needs to be made to those allegations.
There's a letter that came in from this resident, I think, today, I think. I've, I'd only, I was out most of it. I've only had a chance to have a very brief glance at that, and I spoke to Deanna. For what I saw, there was nothing that in that, I didn't see anything in that that had not been in earlier letters, including the statement that was read out by that resident at an earlier meeting a couple of months ago when, 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 when I was present. He claims that this, the, the auditors are, have a threshold of five hundred thousand that is material to disclose related parties, transactions in, in, in the finance. Everything, there's a materiality threshold. All these funds we're talking about, you know, if it's, if it's ten dollars and fifty cents, doesn't get shown. I mean, it is a materiality threshold for everything and, and it's quantitative and it's qualitative, both. And on related party transactions, by their very nature, the qualitative side is a, is a much lower threshold than, than many, many other, many other, you know, types of tran- transactions. Having said that, for anyone who is at, where this five hundred thousand comes from, to be fair, at an audit committee meeting, and it's, it's on public record, the tape is there on the, on the website, one of the audit committee members asked the partner of the audit firm if she could give us a number for what would be, what she would consider material to disclose in the financial statements at for, for related parties, right? And she thought about it, and it's on record, and said she thought five hundred thousand. So these, this, these letters that I've read give the impression that this, this is a, a, a firm position of PKF that five hundred thousand is the magic number, which is, and I don't mind this being on record, is somewhat unfair because, you know, firms of accountants, I was a partner in Deloitte for many years. I mean, firm position is determined collectively through a process and a number of people involved, and there are reviews and sign-offs and all kinds of things. That's how you determine a firm, firm position. She was, as an individual, giving a reaction, an opinion off the cuff to a question on a meeting. So to characterize it, this is that they've decided as a firm is material, I think is, is, you know, simplistic and, and unfair. How to, to, to her, because she was just responding to a question to the best of her ability, and I've had to do that in audit committees myself as an auditor. You, you answer to your best, your ability, but not a, not a, not a, you know, a firm position. However, this year, the, the, the preparers, the management, the executive branch of this town government has decided to disclose related party transaction. I think that's the note you're referring to.
Yes. Or sixty-eight.
Sixty, one on page sixty-eight.
Yes.
Now, the audit committee doesn't prepare the financial statements, right? Management and the auditors give a great deal of assistance, thank goodness for, for them, they do a great job in preparing the financial statements. But the, the, the executive branch of government, which is the board, the CFO and, and the staff and the, up, up to the selectmen, is responsible for the preparation of these financial statements, right? And they decided this year to include this, this note. It was not there before. It's two hundred and eighty-one thousand, as you say, Mr. Thunam. And the audit committee looks at that and says, is it reasonable to include that as it's worded? And we had a discussion about it and concluded that it, that it is appropriate to, to, to include that note. We agree with it. We support management's decision to include that, as obviously do the auditors, because if you look in the front pages, they're willing to give a, a clean opinion. It does say that while this amount is not material to the file, so the town felt it was prudent to disclose these related party transactions. I agree with that, and all of my fellow, right, audit committee members agree with that. The other aspects to this are, there's a few. Number one, the individual we're talking about here, who was the chairman of town council, he's now a member of the Board of Selectmen, which is where purchases are voted upon. He, we have inquired, now that he's on the Board of Selectmen, is he recusing himself from those votes? And I'm told the answer is yes. Related party transactions require an ethics disclosure filed with a form filled out with the town clerk, and the auditors look at those. I haven't, but they tell, tell us that they found that they're all there, they are done, as the way they should be done. The other aspect is, are we complying, and this is really getting to what I'm on the next slide, but I'll talk about it now for this one. The, the procurement process, are we at the, at the end of the day, buying vehicles at a competitive price? And if, are we going through where you need to and thresholds for getting bids, sealed bids, getting competitive bids? I mean, there are, we have rules on this, but are we complying with our own internal rules to ensure that we are getting a competitive price for the vehicles we buy? Alright. We, we'll get in a minute to the internal audit services, but at that last audit committee meeting, it's on record that when we do this procurement project, it will include looking at that. So I can't answer, I, I have absolutely no reason to believe that we're doing anything irregular in this area. But I can't, I can't say it with any certainty. I have no reason to believe it, but we are going to get the internal auditors to come back with them to look at it and make sure that the processes that we go through to buy vehicles complies with state law and complies with our own internal bidding and procurement procedures.
So we should, you can answer.
And that'll be, that'll be early next year, that, that will get, so that, to me, that's the sort of fourth leg of this tool.
My understanding is, we should, as the town council, we should understand that the financial statements on which we are being asked to vote tonight have been obviously prepared by the Board of Selectmen, the executive branch, the CFO staff have been reviewed by outside auditors, have been reviewed by internal auditor.
By inter, by the audit committee.
Audit committee. So there, there's two or three levels of review.
Yep.
And your opinion and the outside auditor's opinion is that there's nothing in these financial statements that is irregular, improper or should not be approved.
Correct.
Thank you.
That was fantastic. Talent.
Eric, that was.
Great, you'd make a great lawyer. Just a tad follow-up. What we're saying, as I understand it, is that the procedures that we follow now for determining whether the prices were competitive, we, we're not doubting those. It just happens to be that that's one of the things we're reviewing in the future, that process. But we're not reviewing it because we think it's flawed.
No, no, no.
It happens to be an internal audit item.
I mean, yeah, sorry, we are jumping ahead a bit, but let me talk, the, we, the, the town did internal audit work with another firm that actually is merged, it doesn't exist in this, in that form anymore. I think between was, what did they say, fifteen, twenty fifteen and and twenty eighteen, no, sixteen and nineteen, three years, we did various internal order, it was before my time, before Mary's time. We had a firm of internal orders looking at various activities, right? One thing they, they never got to was the procurement procedures, okay, which is, you know, our, our expenditure is mainly in two forms, right? We pay salaries and benefits to people that we employ, right? And we, we pay money to suppliers of goods and services outside vendors, goods and services, right? So that, which is less than the payroll side. We've decided as an audit committee unanimously that would be good to start with the procurement, what we buy from outside vendors. Not because we buy cars from a related party, no, but we do buy cars, so that will be encompassed in the review.
Thank you.
The, 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 the audit. And then we will know for sure. We'll have an outside party saying, yes, we are, hopefully, yes, we are complying with state law and are complying with our own internal policies and procedures. And they will also, Mr. Chairman, hopefully tell us, we think we like your internal policies and procedures, we think they're appropriate. Or typically, they'll come with some recommendations to, or things to think about to tighten them up or, or, or change them in one way or another. Because these people, they audit across the state. I mean, so they see what towns all over the state and in Massachusetts are doing. And then they, hopefully, you pay these people, come with ideas to consider things that we could, we could improve, yeah.
Excellent. Do you want to continue on in your presentation? Or we need to kind of move this along?
So we've covered a lot of this. So if we go to the next page, which is the RFP for Independent Audit Services, and this is kind of a recap, Mr. Chairman, because I've been here and got your approval for the appointment of the auditors. So we, we, in normal circumstances, we would have gone out in twenty twenty or twenty-one, somewhere around about there, and requested proposals for our independent audit services for auditing this document. Pandemic, we didn't. We, we, we just kept on the firm that we had. And we, in twenty twenty-three, we started, well, the, the finance department started to put, pull together requests for proposals, which went out. We got only two responses. A lot of towns that have done it in Fairfield County that have done it are only getting one from, from their incumbent auditor. We did get two. There's, there's reasons for that, but we did get two. So fortunately, we were in the fortunate position of being able to interview two firms. Both were well-qualified to, to do our audit. In the end, we recommended, the audit committee recommended, and it went through the approval process, coming eventually to the town council to reappoint PKF, our current auditor, or the then auditor, for a further three-year term. And part of the reasoning for that was their inclusion of a new lead partner in it. You know, in the private sector, the companies registered with the SEC, there's no requirement to rotate audit firms. It's, some argue it's a good thing, and certainly, I think in the public sector, government sector, it is a good thing. In the, if, in the, in the private sector, you have to rotate the partner every five years. I mean, so you get, you get fresh ideas. So they did put in a new lead partner who is actually a long-serving member of the team. She knows us well, we know her well, she's very good. She got promoted to partner, and we're very happy to have her. So we reappointed them, or you reappointed them for another three years. So that's kind of recapping something I said earlier, right? I think we got that right.
Yeah.
And then on the internal audit side, where as I say, well, here it is, we did projects between twenty seventeen and twenty nineteen, and then they stopped, right? So we put out an RFP, we got six, six responses. Four of them were totally unqualified. There was a firm in Louisiana that applied and they wanted us to pay their travel expenses hotel bills and things like that, and we said, no, thanks. We ended up interviewing two. We liked them both. They have Um, we ended up interviewing two. We liked them both. They have complementary but different skill sets. Uh, they're, they're in the, in the tri-state area. They both have a lot of experience. Um, and um, I came to you two or three months ago and said, we'd like to work with both of these firms on different projects that match their particular skills, and you agreed to that. So we then uh, appointed an audit, internal audit subcommittee, which is, there was one of those in twenty seventeen to nineteen, just for efficiency sake, to streamline it. So only three of the audit committee members um, are involved in overseeing the sort of week-to-week activities of internal auditors. So Mary and I, we have other jobs. So we said to the other three, this is your job, right? And they elected Bill Bradley as the chairman of that. We had a meet, that was one of our special meetings to appoint them. So for um, one of the firms, uh, which you approved was CLA, Clifton Larson Allen. And as it says here, we are in initial discussions with them. We don't have a signed brief yet uh, for a first project, which will start in, hopefully in January, once all this is done, finance department has time, uh, which will focus on the, on a, on a, as I say, procurements of goods and services. Money, things we buy from outside vendors, um, probably in two buckets. It's so big because it's going to cover the schools as well as the town, right? And it's so, it's big, so it'll probably be in two, two buckets, partly because we have a budget um, and partly because it's a lot of work. Likely, and we haven't got the yet, we'll do the sort of operating side in between January and June in this fiscal year, and the, the capital expenditure side in the um, uh, in the new year, second half of twenty twenty five. But this is still all evolving, and I will come back and talk to you about these things as they evolve. Any questions on that?
Any questions on that? Anybody?
No?
Okay.
Okay, the other firm, we're still in discussions with them on, that's Korn Resnick, on, on their master service agreement. Um, it's, it's really to do with the indemnity side where uh, we haven't yet reached agreement. Hopefully, we, we will. It's taking longer than we would like. But we're probably not going to, given the, the magnitude of this task we're going to give to CLA, we probably wouldn't work with Korn Resnick in the next six months anyway, so that doesn't matter. We've got a few reporting suggestions, which are with Ann, to, you know, to mainly on the, on the uh, MDNA and Eric and everybody else. Um, anything that, you know, we, we, we don't have a monopoly on good ideas to approve this document, so we're probably the last people because we're so close to it. So any ideas to improve it, feed them in. We've got a few. Um, we've, we would like, uh, maybe we'll get there one day. This second bullet is there every year, periodic balance sheet information. Um, you know, I'm used to seeing balance sheets every month. We see them here once a year, but you know, we're working on that. Awards um, for the eighth year. This year we got the, it's the certificate, certificate of excellence in reporting from the government Financial Office Association, as in here. So well done team. And the sixth year with distinguished budget presentation award. And the last slide is just to thank everybody concerned. I mean, I've already thanked the, my audit committee members, uh, past and, and present, but to you, Ann, and your team, and Sean and your team, and the honor and the board of selectmen, um, the, the superintendent, Brian, I mean, he is, he's fabulous. Gives us all the support in the world. Um, and it's just been great, um, um, you know, cross-functional cooperation. This, this year we've worked well. We, you know, we're, we're happy and it's, it's done and was with a couple of weeks to spare. So that's all I got of them.
Excellent. Uh, any further questions or comments from anybody? Maria, please.
Um, for the related party transaction paragraph, I looked at the last audit, um, and that wasn't in there. So this is here now. So going forward, is that something that's going to be included in the?
It would depend on, on, on the amount. You know, it is below, I mean, this, I, I wish he couldn't, this gentleman keep harping on the five hundred thousand. I mean, you know, the lady was put on the spot and so it gives us a reaction. But I mean, we, we, the, the, the town and the audit committee and the auditors looked at it, two hundred and eighty one thousand. Yes, I, we, this is, um, it's a sensitive area. It, it, absolutely, there's no harm to include, include something like that. It is a good idea for fair presentation, include something like that. Now, is, if it's one hundred and eighty one thousand rather than two, would, would we put it in if this one eighty one next year? You know, I, I can't really ans- answer that. You know, we, we, you look at it every year. Doesn't mean it's in uh, next year. I mean, if it, this sort of level, if it's, yeah, I mean, if it's around two hundred and eighty one thousand, for sure, it'll be there. If it goes up, it'll be there, but it's, it's a judgment every year.
Yeah, we were not required to put it in by the auditors. It was a judgment called by the audit committee. Um, but we were told we did not need to put it in there. It was a, you know, because of the sensitivity. So um, it's not necessary. It was just a, a.
No, it's a good, good idea.
Not necessary. It was just done to be, you know.
Sorry, but added transparency.
Yeah, yes.
It says that, yeah.
Yeah.
And I think, you know, this, I mean, let's say it's two hundred and eighty one thousand next year. I, we wouldn't take it out, no.
No, and just to, to give you some, like, um, context of it. The percentage that they work out what's material is on a hundred and eighty eight million dollars. So you're talking two hundred and eighty one dollars, which is point one percent or less than point one percent. From a materiality standpoint, that's why it would never hit it. To hit that threshold, it would have had to been over a million, two million, three to say, now we really have to put a, a related party because it's hitting there. They do a percentage on top of a percentage, but it's based on a hundred, from government wide, it's a hundred and eighty eight million dollars for two hundred and eighty one dollars. So it's less than um.
But you, you can see because of, I agree with Ann, but because of this, this qualitative, as well as, as I said earlier, and when she was put on the spot, our audit partner, you know, what do you think? I mean, off the top of her head, she's not saying one point two for something like this. She's saying five hundred, five hundred, yeah.
Like, you, you've answered Eric's excellent question in that it was put in at, you know, not as a courtesy, but for, for further transparency. And in addition to that, going forward, it will be looked at even more carefully when you address procurement, so.
No, I, I, I'll add one thing, and I don't mind it being on the record, and this is not an accounting or an audit observation. But you know, when the um proprietor or joint proprietor of this particular business moves from the town council to the board of selectmen, which is the body that approves these things, I think it does make a difference, to me, anyway, in, in, in agreeing that this is appropriate disclosure, even though he can't vote on it.
Just reuse all every time there's any vote.
Hmm.
I can, I can vouch for that personally, because I'm in all those meetings.
Okay, any other questions? Everyone feel we've fully vetted this issue? Everyone had an opportunity to speak and ask questions? We're good to go? We're ready to vote? All right, can we, uh, Thomas, make the motion?
Oh, I move that we approve the uh, audit committee recommendation.
Motion.
Accept the uh, audit committee's recommendation on, on the audited financial statements.
Jennifer, seconds, all in favor? It's unanimous. Okay, excellent. Again, thank you for the hard work.
And I want to say from our side of, of going through the process, um, uh, it was a really good process we went through. PKF uh, changed the partner, a lot of testing, a lot of deep testing on everything, um, which is not always a pleasant thing to go to, but it's a good thing because it came out fine. Um, the audit committee was very flexible with us for timing because it's very tough once you get to that last piece to try and get meetings together. So they were very flexible in, in meeting and trying to get things together to keep it moving so we could hit the deadlines. Um, the finance department staff, the department heads themselves and all the stuff when they get the call from finance and it's like, oh. Yeah, they don't want to hear it go, and they want another document in my firstborn and, and the full support of the honor of first selection. So it was a very good process going through, uh, it is very seamless, but very detailed.
Thank you. We appreciate that. Yeah, all right. Okay, uh, agenda item number five. Cash management and interest income update on earned interest, income and investment strategies. Ten minutes, Ann Kelly Luntz and Andrew Brooks. What was yours?
Um, so I'm sharing on the screen, and I emailed uh, shortly before the meeting tonight to everyone, a copy of the spreadsheet. Did not get it onto your tablets, apologies for that. Um, but if you can't follow along from your email, you, you can attempt to read from the screens here. Um, what I wanted to do is just give a quick overview of um, where the Fed is headed in terms of interest rates, because obviously that has a big impact on the revenue that we're going to derive from the cash that we have on hand. Um, so earlier this year in September, the Fed cut rates by fifty basis points. So it's the first rate cut since all the rate hikes in twenty twenty three. And then they did another twenty-five basis point cut last month. Uh, so now we're in this four point five to four point seven five target range currently. And next week, the Fed is expected to meet again, and ninety-six percent uh, odds are in favor of another twenty-five basis point cut. Um, four percent chance that they don't cut. Um, and the reason why they're only doing a quarter point cut is there was additional inflation data that came out showing that inflation was still a little higher than expected. And in order to keep inflation down, you don't want to cut rates too quickly. You want to kind of keep them where they are. Um, you know, interest rates are the Fed's main mechanism for fighting inflation. Um, so all this is, uh, to say is that this is good news for us because we've been able to capitalize on higher interest rates for a longer period of time than initially anticipated. Um, you know, when I did the budget estimate for this fiscal year, we projected two million dollars for the general fund um, in investment income. And that was based on a projection of rates coming down actually earlier on in the fiscal year than they have. So we've enjoyed higher rates for longer, which has translated nicely um, for our accounts. So I'll move to the next tab over here. The second tab, I show the interest income earned last fiscal year in twenty-four, as well as um, fiscal year to date twenty-five. Um, and you'll see so far, I also broke it out by general fund interest as well as other funds. Other funds include capital projects, fund, uh, sewer funds and grant funds. Um, so again, the two million dollars focused just on the general fund interest. Um, but I'm counting as well on a separate line here, the non-general fund interest revenues. And to date, we've earned close to one point four million altogether. Um, for general fund interest, one point two five million. So we're well on track. We're less than halfway through the fiscal year, but we're already more than halfway to our budgeted target. So we, it is looking positive for us to exceed our budgeted um, amount this fiscal year, uh, which is great. Uh, great news. Now, um, I do want to highlight as well that rates have started to come down. We were enjoying rates in excess of five percent up until last month. As the Fed has started to lower rates, we've seen a cut now on our rates at the banks. Um, you know, at Webster primarily is where we tend to keep most of our cash um, that we need available to pay expenses, right? And what we're talking about here is, we're not talking about pension funds, right? We're talking about the town's operating cash um, that we will need to spend at some point. Um, but it also includes that fund balance we were talking about earlier when we were discussing the, the bonding and the, and the triple A rating that we always have on hand. Um, so we, we've seen that drop to four point, four and a half percent on our main um, money market accounts that we've been maintaining. Um, and then on our um, capital project account is two point four five. And then on our main checking account, pooled cash, it's one point seven four. Um, and again, most checking accounts earn zero. So we were able to negotiate some interest on our checking. We try to keep that checking balance as low as possible, keep the money in the highest yielding accounts as long as possible, right? That's how we maximize the income. And then in terms of our two broker dealers that we, you know, that I execute transactions with, the date is a little skewed here from the end of November because we had a large treasury bill come due for over ten million dollars. That's why we had ten million in insured cash sweep. That ten million has since been transferred over to Webster to pay year-end expenses, or I get calendar year-end expenses. So I've moved that money in early December, about a week after the, the, the statement. Um, so that money is available to be spent down before we enter tax collection season again, right? So we're right now at our, we're entering our low point for, in terms of cash balances, until the next um, tax collection cycle picks up. Um, but primarily I've been investing in treasuries, short-term treasuries, three to six months um, in duration. But I also, we have funds that we know we're not going to need to touch. I've been going out a little bit longer on some of those, trying to lock in these heightened rates for longer before the Fed reduces them further. Um, and so that will ensure that we hit our, our two million dollar uh, target for, uh, for, from, from a budget standpoint. Um, we have some US agency-issued securities, that's Fannie Mae, Freddie Mac, um, Federal Home Loan Bank issued securities, some of which are pretty old, some actually predate my tenure here, and I've been here for eleven years. Um, those are hold-to-maturity securities. Um, you don't want to sell those because you may realize a loss. Um, whereas if you hold it to maturity, you're guaranteed all your principal back plus any interest. Those are earning a lower rate of interest than I personally would like, given where rates are now. Um, but again, in order to avoid um, realizing any losses, and we've never realized a loss since I've been here, and I don't want to start doing that now. We are holding those to maturity. Many of them are become, are maturing in late twenty-five and twenty twenty-six. So we're going to see those balances, um, you know, a little, you know, nine point eight million in agencies, we're going to see that come down. That money I'll be able to reinvest in higher yielding treasuries. Um, so we'll be in a better position as, as those begin to mature. Um, anyway, happy to answer any questions um, about this data.
Great. So um, can I go? Okay. Um, that, that pool that you say is coming due in twenty twenty-five, how long were those investments locked up for?
So some of them for ten years. Um, a, a couple of them I see have a date of, you know, early twenty thirteen, which was before, before I was even elected.
Yeah, just understanding wh- where that's coming from, so that the market's different, the strategy's different. And um, I think in the last conversation, it might have been a year ago or something of that nature during the budget and having that conversation, we discussed about layering and structuring of like having liquidity come three, six, nine, twelve, and then having something about three years and then five years, considering that the, the interest rates were never there in the last, like, two, like decade and a half. Um, you've done an excellent job with that, so congratulations. Um, it's, it's a very fluid market. So I just want to say I love where your mind's at to capture like where the market is today, knowing that there's probably cuts coming. But there's a balance of like the timing, right? Like, you want to risk capital today that's getting a higher amount, but you can't touch it. And if there's, you need a rainy day situation. Um, so just want to say like, are you using any specific investment strategy? Any specific investment company or AI or something that's gonna, that's, or is it you and your team is like, hey, this is market conditions and we're, we're allocating and moving based on uh, the current environment?
The, the latter. I'm doing the analysis. Um, I do ask, we, you know, we have relationships, longstanding relationships with UBS as well as with Jenny Montgomery Scott. They have a team of advisors there that we don't pay. We, we moved away from having a managed account years ago because we were paying, you know, half, half a percentage point, which was eating away at our, at our income. So instead, I in-sourced it, right? Made that my job to, to do that analysis. But we do get a lot of free advice from them, and they do make available to me, actually, their chief fixed income strategists to speak to um, as a thank you for maintaining our relationship with them. So I have been able to access white papers and other um, internal research that has assisted me with making these decisions. And also full-time, I work in wealth management, so I have access to other, other information and research that I'm able to, to leverage for, for this purpose.
That's fantastic. I, I just did a couple of rounds, a couple of capital rounds for a couple of companies I can sold for. And like, you had a huge amount of monies in, like, things are going to go out, but you're, you're positioned for a three to five year run and things of that nature. So there, a lot of it is, hey, where's this being put towards? And hey, you know, we might need to suck, and this is gasoline, and we're going to get cooking. Um, be, be happy to, to work, but I just want to say accolades for, you know, the market conditions and just, you know. Be be happy to to work, but I just want to say accolades for, you know, the market conditions and just, you know, being on for, I guess, three years now and hearing your positioning and taking hold and really putting forth like a real game plan that executing. So nice job.
Thank you. And and I will add to that, too. We have an investment policy that governs what are the permissible investment options on the menu, right? The state of Connecticut does not let towns gamble away their money. Cannot invest in equities, for example, can't invest in corporate paper either. So I have a pretty, you know, limited menu to choose from to begin with, you know, but those guardrails are really important. And obviously every, you know, investment I'm making, I'm looking at the policy, making sure that's in line with the policy, that the duration is in line as well. You know, for the overall investment portfolio.
But I'm saying the ten-year investment that they made, that you weren't involved, and you probably might or may or may have made that investment, but it's
At the time, right.
At the time.
Because rates back then were at zero.
Exactly.
In the wake of the financial crisis, rates were held at zero for many years. And so there, you know, in order to find that yield, you had to go out longer. Thankfully, we're not in that situation today.
And we should capture today's market, right?
And so as those securities mature over time, I'm able to reinvest them, you know, with today's realities instead.
Solid.
I saw you had a question.
Andrew, I was just wondering, and you know, along those lines, how often do you change your asset allocation? And how often do you evaluate where, you know, where's the latest yield coming from? Where do how, what's that strategy like?
So, you know, I have a monthly call with each of our broker dealers. We're looking at coming due in the next ninety days. And then that's when we start to plan out what makes sense in terms of reinvesting those those funds. But then I'm also checking in with Anne to make sure, do you need this cash back? Right? One of the things, one of the things that Anne and I have implemented over the last couple of years is freeing up even more general fund dollars for investment. Now, you know, as the yields went up, it made more sense to take cash from Webster that we didn't need today to park over with UBS or with Jenny. And in those cases, those funds had a much short, shorter term duration, right? Because we knew we would need them back to pay bills later in the fiscal year. So 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 for that tranche of money, I I deploy a different strategy than the funds that we know we're not going to need to touch. Again, unless the sky is falling.
Constant shuffling of, you know.
Andrew said we, there's a constant twenty million out at all times. There's a constant twenty million that's been out for years because that's technically our fund balance. So in closing all these funds that we've been trying to close these funds that had money in it and also set up CBAs. So instead of those those funds sitting out in other accounts, I close them down to a ZVA. So they're only funded as it comes in through a feeder fund like the general fund. We keep that at a five million dollar level. So it's minimum in there and it can support what we need. We funnel everything else so that we shift it over to the fund value. The money market, which is where they the rates are pretty high right now. So in doing all that, we were able to come up with, not come up with, but there was twenty million out there that it fluctuates on our needs. So we can put it out for five months. And then I go, Andrew, I need that ten million now. And I, we just pulled another ten, too. We're trying not to pull any till tax season because usually we pull around fifteen to twenty. We're at eighteen million right now. We our run rate is about, you know, fifteen million a month. So if we can get through December, we're not going to ask for that extra ten million. So we can keep now thirty million in it versus that twenty.
Super solid.
So that's what, and then the tax season comes in again, and then we'll once I get through tax season, what we need, then we'll send another ten million back going. You can have that. So that that flow keeps going with the twenty million that's out there all the time.
Right. You mentioned CBAs, just what is it?
CBAs, zero balance accounts. So we have a lot of like accounts that
Oh, ZBA.
Sorry, zero balance, yeah.
Zero balance.
Yeah, zero balance account. So so not to keep funds in those accounts. Our medical insurance, because we don't know when they're going to pull out and what dollar amount. So every night they just pull out of our general fund to fund the expenditures. We just keep a certain level that that general fund can support an average of what they might pull. And then we take from the money market when needed. So we keep that minimum amount in.
It's actually brilliant because then you you're you're you know what you're working with and then it the bank automatically pulls. So then you know in real time. And then you could base things on a day-to-day, week-to-week or month-to-month basis. So to schedule that like infrastructure seemed really appropriate and smart.
And the other benefit, too, is we're able to earn interest on that cash because it's sitting in an interest-bearing account. This EBA account is non-interest-bearing. And before Anne implemented that, we had balances in some of those other smaller accounts. And the bank was not giving us interest on those funds. So now we are able to earn extra interest by having this structure. So it's been very good.
And the claims, do you take a claims estimate and put it in an assigned status? Or is it all unassigned?
It's all it's all unassigned.
Okay.
It just, as they need it, they just pull. I think we have we have four accounts set up as EBA, and certainly we set up the tax one. So that was an immediate because we wouldn't know sometimes after hours, twenty million might go, ten million might come in from the we can see it pending sometimes. So then we'll we'll put that request in to transfer it to the money market for when it hits that night. So it goes directly to money market to try and keep on top of when those taxes and mortgage companies come in. So it doesn't sit overnight. Or even over the weekend, we try and get it, excuse me, on Fridays so that we can pull it. It's set there so that once it hits after five or whatever time it pulled.
How much interest income do you get from checking? From the interest-bearing checking that you didn't get before, just out of curiosity?
So in the interest-bearing checking account pooled cash as of, so fiscal year to date, we've earned close to fifty thousand in that account. And then last
Yeah.
And last year, we did about a hundred and twenty thousand in that account. So, you know, because we do keep it again.
We lowered the balances on the on the money market or on the on the checking. We lowered it. It was at about eight, down to about five.
So I don't want it to be reflective just on the the what the income was for the checking account was was a was a properly managed. We're earning less in this account. We're going to earn more in this council. But you can't compare apples like, hey, why did you earn less that year? It's because we took funds out of that account that wasn't earning much, put into an account that's earning more. So very smart.
So that's how we've optimized things. And then I'll also just quickly mention, too. You know, when you're investing, you need to think about the safety of of those securities at those, you know, third parties. And so we do have excess SIPC insurance coverage for those securities at UBS as well as Jenny. Obviously, those are two well-established broker dealers. So, you know, I I and we've worked with them for over a decade, I think, actually even longer than I've been here. So we've maintained those those relationships. But as part of the audit process, we actually, we just had to look at the SIPC insurance coverage and bring that over to our auditors, make sure that it's it's where it should be. And so anyway, I just wanted to to point that out as well. And then for the bank account side, we have fully collateralized accounts. That's the other benefit of having these money market accounts, these accounts here in rows seven, eight and nine. Those are a hundred percent collateralized and also the Webster pooled cash account, too, I should add, all of our Webster accounts. So so the bank is essentially, you know, you know, as FDIC insurance is only two hundred and fifty thousand. But by fully collateralizing the balances, we're protecting a hundred percent of our balance. So that if Webster were to fail tomorrow, they're holding securities that can be liquidated and essentially given back to us. They're they're held in their trust department in on our behalf, you know, on behalf of the town. So I just want to point that out that the the funds are safe from a, you know, from from that standpoint, too.
Okay, any other questions, comments, anything, anybody? Full opportunity to chat. Okay, great. Other than that, anything else?
No, thank you all. And I'm sure during the budget season, we'll be back to talk about that estimated figure. I'm starting to sharpen my pencil and figure out what what we should project for for the next year.
Well, excellent work. We're in really great hands. Thank you for all the hard work, both of you. Yes, thanks. Okay, moving on to agenda item number six, committee reports by laws and ordinance, Tom and Hillary.
Of course, we had a very good initial meeting on e-bikes. It's a very complex, complex subject. So I think we're all trying to master it. But the one initiative that we did take is to meet with Brian Lutzey because it's not really the the mandate of the town council to figure out how to do effective education and communication. Dr. Lutzey's pretty good at that. So he's agreed to sort of initiative, not not exclusively. There are a lot of people that can can effectively communicate what we told him is, you know, how do you get in the in the head of a e-bike rider under age sixteen to make him be careful? And I didn't have a good answer to that question. He's slightly more confident that he understands that challenge. But 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 one of the things that they're going to work on is there's a there's an analytical process that the schools used to get their arms around the question of making of restricting cell phone use in the junior in the Saks. And it's called design thinking. And he says, why don't we use that same analytical process, which employs students and brainstorming and using that that process and to to analyze, you know, how how, what's the, what's the most effective way to educate kids? So that they'll be more safe on riding e-bikes. And so we'll see what happens. They're going to, they're going to take a shot at that. But anyway, we have more analysis. Do we have some legal things that we'd like to get cleared up and probably we'll try to meet in January?
Excellent, Tom. That's really fantastic. Okay. Education. Maria and Rita, anything?
Just Rita and I are working on meeting with Dr. Lutzey and the Board of Ed, just to do a budget preview. And that's about it. We're working on the date.
Okay, great. Finance.
I don't know if Rita has any.
Rita, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, I mean, just a couple of just quick things of things to think about, but that there were board elections. I don't know if you guys are aware, just so you know, Hugo House continues to be chair. Phil Hogan is the vice chair. Erica Schwedel maintains as secretary. They did have some discussions around staffing and enrollment, and we'll be hearing about that from Dr. Lutzey. I think in the short term, they they haven't, they're not seeing increases, but there are increases anticipated in several years. And we need to be prepared. And so they're going to, they're going to be coming with a point of view during the budget season to give us some sort of idea of what might, what might be expected in coming years.
Excellent. Thank you. Okay, finance and government, Eric and Hillary.
Excuse me, the one area that Hillary and I, Hillary and I have focused on is the library. As you all know, in the early summer and then July, the town council can constructed a list of fifty-seven questions. And those fifty-seven questions were compiled from all members of the town council and then sent to Mark Dewaley and Doug Stewart, who frankly, were not in any position to answer those questions, but shared them with library staff. There wasn't a whole lot of follow-up from town council until about October, November, when the chairman encouraged Hillary and me to reach out to Dewaley and Stewart and or the library staff, which we did. We met separately with Dewaley and Stewart. I wanted to just meet them because I hadn't met them in connection with the library and I want to understand what their roles were. And they're not entirely clear what their roles are, but but they're certainly happy to help us. They suggested that those questions are only really appropriately forwarded to Ellen Cravato and her staff. Fifty-seven, however, is a very big number. So Hillary and I set about consolidating that list of fifty-seven questions, some of which were repetitive of other questions in the group. And we consolidated that to down to a request of fourteen items and or questions, which we circulated on November nineteen to the the full town council. And then we forwarded that to Ellen with a copy to Dewaley and Stewart and Chairman Morrow. And we have had some conversation with Ellen. And her thought was that it would be best to address all of those questions in conjunction with our budget process combined with the Board of Finance. And so we will get answers to all of those questions as part of the Board of Finance review and as part of the pre-town council approval of the budgets. And we really think that's a better way to approach things now. Ellen and her staff are very busy getting ready for reports and presentations that they need to make to the Board of Selectment. And then once they move from the Board of Selectment budget process to the Board of Finance, Hillary and I and others who wish to will get involved in those conversations and start getting answers to all fourteen of those questions. And you've got the list of fourteen questions because we sent those on November nineteen. So any questions, I'm happy to take them, but I'm confident we're going to move forward and get answers to our questions.
Just a quick question. I I know that we can find those things if we hunt and peck on the website. But would you notice us when when the those the breakout meeting for the library will be presenting at Board of Finance if you're or any any of those types of meetings for those of us who are not on your committee as an extra heads up?
Yep.
Yeah, Jen, those are, those are public meetings anyway that we have to notice. Any subcommittees that are meeting with the Board of Finance and the various departments will have to be noticed anyway.
So so I know you noticed them to the public, but if you want to give us an internal. Thank you.
I mean, yeah, that might be helpful for all subcommittees, frankly, because, you know, sorry, my dog is being super annoying. That's not a bad idea.
Okay, great. Anything else? All right. Move it along. Health and Human Services.
Rest assured that everyone in New Canaan is being taken very well taken care of from a health standpoint and the mental health standpoint. The health department is doing Medicare counseling for residents that need that at Lapham. They're doing a walking group that's going to even meet in the winter. I think there's fifteen people that are walking. They walk for an hour. They're continuing to do flu clinics and they have a steady amount of people getting vaccinated. At the end of December, they're going to do suicide training that they've been doing ongoing that will continue at the library. And the New Canaan Community Foundation survey has preliminary data that's going to be coming out for the public in January. And there'll be some working groups meeting in December to go over that. There's a new health director, medical director for the town, Dr. Reed retired. He's been the health director since two thousand nine. And the new person coming in is a internist in New Canaan with a concierge practice named Dr. Jamie Rozkowski. I think I said that right. And she's been working with them already. And so they're very happy with that change, although sad to see Dr. Reed leave. For Human Services, caseloads are remaining, you know, pretty steady. Gift cards were given to ninety-eight kids in New Canaan, a hundred dollar Walmart gift cards were given to to families who needed some help at Christmas, which I think is great. The fire department delivered some gifts to kids at St. Mark's, thirty-three kids got gifts from the fire department. The police union has are giving out gifts to kids as well. Let's see, the urgent assessment program is, you know, continuing to 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 go on. They're thinking of changing their name, taking out the word urgent. They had twelve referrals in November. And Weston did become is part of it. They had four slots, which is a funding ratio. Now they've decided to pull back to two slots. So there's a bit little bit of reduced funding in that. Also, Dr. Pierce, who I know my kids had as a doctor, he's stepped down from Chair of Health and Human Services. He was Chair from two thousand nine to two thousand, sorry, two thousand nineteen to two twenty twenty-four. There was a nice proclamation that was given to him by our first selectman, talking about all of the service to the town in so many different areas. And so a new election was held for officers and Barbara Akkenbaum will be the new Chair of Health and Human Services. Peter Campbell will be the Vice Chair and Jen Lattick will be the Secretary. And oh, one last thing, they're thinking of adding a donate button to the Health and Human Services page so that anyone can donate for all of these great things that they do. So that's a work in progress. That's it.
Excellent report. Okay, Infrastructure and Utilities, Christina and Rita.
Okay. The fitness stations at Wavine Park will be is in the process of being removed and plans are on the way to replace the swing set and the exercise equipment. More information on that will be given at the next meeting. The DOJ and the town came and came to an agreement to comply with ADA standards in certain buildings and facilities. And that has been signed and the town is is in the process of planning out how and the time. Is in the process of planning out how in the timeframe in which to accomplish the projects. That's it.
Excellent. Land use, recreation and conservation, Penny and Jennifer.
I have nothing.
Okay. Public safety is Mike and Hillary. Police building, uh, the steel structure in the rear is up, uh, the existing building, the mechanical systems are going in. Which is great. And also some of the finishes are starting, which shows great progress, uh, in, uh, the, uh, police building. Fire is pretty quiet, but notably, uh, I'm always happy when a new restaurant is coming in. So Lombardi's is on Elm will be coming hopefully by March. I was actually chatting with, uh, the owners there. So hopefully they're on track for that, which would be lovely. And, um, Taka, what's the name of the wave? What's it called? Waveney Grill? Yeah. The Waveney. Yeah, they have their. Uh, so it'd be nice, a nice, another addition to town. Um, so anyway, that's all I have for police and fire. Hillary, do you have anything?
I do not. Thank you.
Awesome. Okay. And on that note, affordable housing committee, Hillary.
We're, you know, Riverwood is closed and we are. Our committee meeting for this month was canceled just to let that sort of take shape. We'll see where we end up there. I know demand is, um, pretty high for affordable housing. So we'll keep working on it and, you know. The next moratorium will be here before you know it. So we'll probably have to. Come up with something else.
Awesome. Okay. Uh, so with that said, it's eight thirty-two, um, this is our last meeting of the year. So all, to all of you and your families, uh, happy holidays. I hope you all have a safe and lovely time with your families. And I just also want to personally thank all of you for your hard work this year. We have another year in the books. We have our new members who've had a, a full year on. I think everyone's doing a fantastic job and I'm real proud of everybody. So. With that said, can we get a motion to adjourn? Okay, unanimous. Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, Mike.
Mike, thank you for everything you do.
Really appreciate it. You're a great leader.